We sign, we confirm all sorts of stuff and then I got it back today saying it's in the queue and it takes two to three weeks to get payment. So she said once it's been approved for that, we'll give it back. She said it's roughly two to three weeks, so maybe we'll see it that soon, which would be great. So also, I have the dog warrant now that it's June for you guys to sign and then I'll give it to Dan. And you know, now that we have the civil fines that we can give to people and actual fine through judicial court, you know, after one additional contact and then after that, it will be the more severe consequences. So that's done there, please assign. I have reached out to Mike Josslyn for the ball field. He wasn't able to get to visit them last week. He was open yesterday or today and I haven't heard back from him yet, so that's still works. So he, you know, he's been at Jack the Ball Field, he does B and U's, so it's, you know, something that he knows all about and Josslyn's for us, his company.
Who does the field maintenance now? Is it just like a volunteer person?
Well, the pillars as well and then the men's league has a drive and they've been doing stuff. Little League was like...
Little League does a little bit of...
I saw someone out directing the dirt, so I figured, he's like, whoa, I had someone.
Yeah.
We don't.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Yeah, they actually stopped at the shop and picked it up. It's been at the shop for a hundred years.
So hopefully he takes a look at it and, you know, I know a few years back he had come up with some of even a drainage plan that maybe he'll have some more ideas of that.
Yeah.
The, uh, a couple of small things. The drop off that we use for these audio recordings is almost full and just let me know if I delete some old ones because the law is thirty days after the minutes have been approved. So that's not looking long, so take a few of them off will help with that. The state also has launched a new election portal that courts use and then a new site for everyone to go on that can, you can register to vote, you can check your registration, you can see ballots and all that and it's vote.marmont.gov, so that just got to run in this month. The site that I get to see is totally real, it looks fine, basically just, you know, all the upgrades and updated information. The tax sale is happening June nineteenth, two properties. One page can go ahead of it ahead of time. So that's still on board for, for June nineteenth up in the office. I have a liquor license for to approve that the Rotten Forest Country Store LLC for the owners are...
That's good.
Yeah, Jessica's doing that. So if you guys make a motion to get approval if you so choose and then when it comes to the portal, I can just put all on it.
You want a motion for that?
Yes.
Okay.
And I have some, something about FEMA, two to three weeks. MERC, we just got the first bill from C X Associates, so we have that money ahead of time, that seventy-nine thousand, so, so we can pay that easily. The plane grant, I, they have it where you can get forty percent right now, so all that went through and has proved submitted the request for forty percent and that has been approved and should be coming any moment. And the E W P...
On the best of our bottom of the store.
Up on the store is moved on to the next thing of a site survey, so she's coming next week, um, just check on that, see it. I let Bill know and he'll be walking around whatever day the weather's good.
Survey all two hundred fifty degrees, right?
Yeah. And that's it on that list.
So I make a motion to approve the, the license for the forest store.
Okay, um, Baker?
I'm on.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. Uh, Assessor Dorothy?
Um, I've been working on everything so I can get the, oh, yeah, I started the grant list. Not that it's coming along very well, hopefully put in the next week or so, I'll get that done. And then it'll be, I'll send out change of appraisals and then we'll wait to see if we have grievances, so. Everything's been falling into place pretty good.
Have any change of appraisals do you think so then? How many cases of appraisals?
Um, I think I have, as of today, I have fifty-seven, I think fifty-eight. And then also the, the current use ones go out and they get, they get a agreements form also, so that's another sixty-five, so.
How many agreements do we typically have a year?
Oh, it varies. Sometimes we'll have one, sometimes we'll have eight or ten. And sometimes we've had years, um, when people didn't even do like agreements, they just show up on grievance day or show up to BCA and say, oh, I want to have an agreement, so we, we can't help.
Gotcha.
Um, it depends. Most of the, most of the change of appraisals are like building permits, you know, houses and additions and that sort of thing, so.
Good.
I'm on side.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Good, Dan, you're up.
Um, the last thing, we talked about me checking into rabies shots and things for preventative. I called Woodsville Hospital, talked to the person down there, it's going to be thirty-five hundred dollars for the three-shot series and because I have prones, it's not effective. So that's, you know, I wouldn't have put it before the board anyway, thirty-five hundred. Just ridiculous, so. A lot of dog calls, um, a couple beer calls, you know. Permits are picking up, um, so it's going to be interesting, so. That's all I got.
We should catch up after.
Yes, yes.
Got some videos.
Kitty, the fire pass?
Yes, um, well, I came here tonight, um, to, uh, get the, catch the board up on, um, some stuff that we've been discussing at the, at the fire station. Um, first and foremost, um, our engine is, is definitely aging out. Um, it needs to be replaced. I think that would probably be the next, uh, area focus. A major thing that, that the fire department will have to focus on. Um, I don't know if you guys have probably saw a couple POs come through for maintenance on it and whatnot, so, um, one of the pipes coming off the top, the pump, had rotted off. Um, and so, um, she is showing, showing an age. Uh, twenty-five years is the NFPA standard and it's a two thousand and one. So, um, it, we, we know we should have worked on that, uh, prior to now. Um, but, uh, hopefully we'll be seeing, um, picking up on that, on that front. Um, we do have money in our, in the, uh, emergency vehicle fund and I don't think it's not enough, but, um, it's a place to start anyways. Um, I don't have any numbers or anything to put in front of you. I just, we're just more seriously talking about it, so I wanted to bring it to the board, so it's, it's, you know, they, you guys, uh, know that we're talking about it. Um, along the same lines, um, and, you know, I mean, not at the same time certainly, but I would hope, my hope would be within the next decade would be to update, replace the station. Um, that was building seventy, um, should, we certainly attend. And Dorothy, that was fifteen thousand dollars to build that, nineteen-seventy was it?
No.
I think, the town's gotten their, their money's worth out of the building. Um, it's, it is also aging. Um, it's, it's very bare bones, um, doesn't begin to meet standard requires, requirements, sunny and maybe compliant, um, but that's, and that's not here or there. I mean, the biggest focus will be on, on engine, but just so that, again, that's not coming down to the blue. Um, it's, uh, something that we, uh, I feel that we, uh, it needs to be, needs to be updated and replaced. Uh, along the same lines, um, the fire department's a hundred percent on board with the MERC grant and everything that's been going on there. Um, the other thing that I discussed at the meeting is, is almost everything that's been discussed with it is kind of a game, they, you know, putting a new door in, new lights, whatever, like, I would, and I'm all fine with that, you know, um, but I guess, if we, if we started to talk in major infrastructure, you know, like, I would be more hesitant. Um, because like I said, it's my intention to hopefully have that building down and something else, um, in its place within ten years, so. Um, the stuff that's going on with the MERC grant right now, I think is, it's all easy stuff, you know, it's, like I said, doors and windows and, and lights and stuff. Um, there was a little bit of a hiccup. It's not really a conversation that used to happen with the slideboard, I think, because it's, I think Mike Geis is a driving app. Um, just with the, uh, the fire department is reluctant towards the idea of having a pellet furnace, but is what it is, so, um, if that's something that we're stuck that we've got to do, then it just is what it is, so. Fire station, fire engine, what else did I have? Um, I don't think, we got the two young cadets, um, my son and, uh, James Johnson headed to the Mont Fire Academy for the, um, their training program, uh, the end of June, beginning of July. Um, other than that, um, the fire department is, um, understaffed and overage, overage.
There we go.
Yeah, definitely. So, I mean, other than that, things are going, are going okay, um, are going well, are going well. Um, the, uh, I've been looking into kind of peripherally, not seriously, um, the fire stations and, um, there is a lot of, um, again, this isn't a conversation we really need to have right now, but there's a lot of benefit towards building a new station now. Um, and, um, one of the, uh, one of the things is attracts new membership, a new shiny station. Um, but the other thing, what has happened time and time again in the, in the country, from Idaho to Florida to Texas to Michigan, is a town like Rotten, their fire department fails due to a lack of volunteerism. So what happens is the select board is, has to do something. So they go from the point of chief to an elected, to a, a full-time chief. So a full-time chief comes in and he says, right, it's family and try good, topsome is family. So let's make, yeah, let's all get together and, and instead of having three, we'll have one career department, we'll hire eight guys and, and that's how we'll, we'll cover everything. And that works for a year and then he comes before the towns and say, I need new stations. Because Tri Village stations and Rotten stations and, right, they're not career stations, you know, so, um...
Wouldn't you do one centralized?
I would think so, yeah, but that's not, you know, I mean, that's not that likely.
That's, that's a discussion that needs to be had before we do a new building, for sure.
Well, I think, yes, so, I mean, you would future-proof, right? So you would, you would not be a career building right now, you know what I mean? But you would have the spaces for it. Um, you would have, uh, office spaces that could be turned into a home house, you know, a street broom, so.
Aaron, I'll just tell you, we're about to do the town plan.
Yep.
And the, that section for emergency services, you know, we were reading on, on you and Derek to provide sort of a vision for the future.
Yeah.
In the town plan.
Yeah.
I think it's an eight-year plan now, uh, but that'll be written in the next year, so keep all this...
Yeah.
You know, and it's good for us to hear too, but definitely good stuff for the town plan.
Yeah, yeah. Um, other than that, I think that's, that, that's about it. Um, everything's running fine.
So one of the other things that, um, Aaron mentioned, um, at one of the meetings lately was in the past, we've started and built a truck. We've added this, we've added that, we've argued about that. And where Aaron's vision is, all the fire truck companies have like a stock truck. So it's stock number twenty-nine and that's, I think, where we're thinking we're gonna go, um, is with a stock truck, so that we're not looking at six years out there, you know, to kind of invent a truck and argue and whatever, just get one that's pretty much what we want.
Or it's the...
And get it right off the, get it right off the line and not stop and build one.
So what ends up happening, right or wrong, is, you know, Ronnie's new fire truck. Aaron's been on fire department for twelve years, now's my chance. I'm gonna get that fire truck, you know, like, the town's gonna invest five hundred thousand dollars, I'm gonna get exactly what I want. I'm gonna have all the stuff that I want, all, you know, the town's gonna invest that much money then. But it's, at the end of the day, I said, it's a fire truck. They're all fire trucks. And like Dorothy said, they're stock fire trucks that you, that are ready right now. You know, you just need to put Rotten on the side of it and get it up here. Um, that, that would be my inclination. Um, the, the, the engine that we have right now is a demo. That Ford Gary drove around, um, to show, to show off. It's not perfect for the town of Rotten. You go put tire chains on that, it's that much room in the fenders, but it's done as well. You know, if, if you were to pick us, you wouldn't pick that one, but it's, it's done just fine, um, so.
And it came, we found it was a, it came as a postcard in the mail from, you know, it was an advertiser, we've got this, we're gonna try to sell it. Now that we've got it and the rest is history.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, so as far as I feel with you, you gotta start, you're starting, you gotta get numbers.
Yeah.
You gotta figure out what you want.
Yeah, yeah.
And then bring it to us and we'll take it to the people and, um, and I, I, I don't disagree that something needs to be, nothing lasts forever.
Right.
You know, um, so, but you guys, you, you know, and then on the building a new facility, you gotta get a committee together or something and start, get the right people on it to, to come up with all the different scenarios.
Yes, yeah.
Which isn't me, you know, on that committee. Um, it, uh, but that's how you get this stuff rolling and then, you know, it's, uh, to bring it before the people and...
Yeah, yeah.
And to make it happen if it can happen.
Yeah.
But I think, like you said, priority is a truck, so.
Absolutely, yeah.
It absolutely is, so.
It's, it's, uh, you're doing the right thing, Eric, thank you for what you're doing.
Hopefully, yeah, time will tell, but hopefully we're, we're heading in the direction.
Yes, I appreciate it.
Yeah.
If you guys have no more questions for me, I'm gonna...
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, I'll have a good evening.
Anytime, man. You're up then. Going to? Yeah.
Okay. Ongoing grant.
Yep.
I think we've got a couple of...
Well, I said, I emailed you guys about the public, we'll be extending support for our ninety. Uh, out of the renovation of the state because we were, uh, if we were delayed all in June, we would not be able to remember to extend it because they have the fiscal year, so they just said, just do it. We added the gates, two gates that cross from Montreal. I confirmed with them, they are donating the gates to the town. Carrie, Greg Weston across from Montreal, probably myself, if we pick them up in, up here, bringing them out here. Um, they're the same gates the state has, uh, the same, you see like on Lakeside Drive or, or Bolton, you see all of like the pretty rocks looking gate, you know, but, um, it's the same heart, it's the same looking gate. It's not painted, um, and I think it's only missing like the bolts to hold it together. Uh, we would have to put it together, so it's the arm, the pole, the outer arm and the pole, go like that.
Yeah.
There's two of them and I think with the last, where you were in the last life, where we talked about the stretch from Ragged, Calamine, Clough Arm to, uh, Little League Road. Where are we thinking of?
Yeah.
Let's... Yeah, so the next step is to put it...
Right next to the park.
Mm, the first drive right there.
The first drive, okay.
And then, and next to the park would be a sign that says, "Gate ahead," you know, so don't drive in there.
Yeah.
Something like that. Uh, there's, um, it's questionable whether the grant will cover the whole installation of the gate, so at some point, well, first I'm gonna get quotes, I'll put an ad in the paper for, see how much our cost install these things. Uh, but our grant with twenty-three thousand dollars left and of that twenty-three thousand, I wanna say fifteen is obliged. And then we have to order a bunch of odds and ends like signs and posts and hardware and stuff, um, and other, um, other maps. Um, so the other thing I just wanted to add on the grant extension, we also added winter trail maps for every intersection, which will issue that within town. And that was, um, we realized with the trail count, how many people are coming here in the winter, like, wow, our map is a summer map, the ones we're posting around. And so, uh, the two kiosks have a summer map. So then we talked to Gary, they said, well, what about, um, winter maps at the intersection? Talked to the state, they were okay with adding that, just put it right there. Um, so there'll be nice, um, winter maps as well. Um, and that's it. So I was gonna run an ad for the gates in the paper, I'll build that to Bordech also, uh, except for the installation. We'll see what the quotes are, we won't know, but the grant will cover the whole cost until we're done with, we're close to the end, so probably a month or two. Uh, then one of my guys, it's like five grand for the gate design, so there's three grants left. We can extend it, use all that grant funding and then we just come up with two thousand for the town fund.
Well, I think we need to make it happen.
Yeah, I think so too.
You know, we, we can't, non-do it, so.
We have free...
They're town property maintenance.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, I mean, there's even a chance we have no money left to end of the year.
Yeah, so we need, we gotta get that part of it.
Yeah, that section, uh, when I did the trail count, had been incredible. I didn't count how many cars were driving on it, but way more than people. Yeah.
I got, I got one question on the, the new parking right place down there. Like the grader setting in, two or three failed oil. I mean, what's, have you communicated with Blue Mountain to see what their maintenance?
They have a grader, you know?
What's happening?
No, their machine's setting in the, in that parking place.
They've been fully putting it there every night, but they, they ran out of material.
A lot of work out.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know if they're working on it now.
So they were...
Twice this week and...
They're not working this week. They were working, then they ran out of material, now they're making material and they're gonna be back out. And I think they're kind of treating this as like the easy project, throw in a couple of that's fall off and other projects, or some other project, then they throw them out here because it's closer to their shop, you know, so.
So that's why we extended the...
No.
Oh, okay.
Well, actually, their contract goes to what, June first, I think.
Yeah, because they'll keep doing that.
Yeah, so I mean, I guess I should...
Yeah.
I didn't realize they weren't working this week, oh, their contract's ended.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I mean, if, if we keep giving them leeway, they'll keep...
Yeah, they'll keep.
Well, they don't know the grant.
Yeah, no, I, I just made it, I just, this, with this, it's gonna be the end of the summer and no one gets to advantage of it, makes the track.
So, so here's another thing I have on, on the construction, was that they had done a lot of work. They had these wet spots on that end that they were gonna, after they did the whole thing, come back and fill those in. And then the rain this weekend, they, they were concerned about, weren't sure if they were gonna work this week. I kind of assumed they were, but...
It sounds like you're on top of it.
Not really, actually, yeah. As much as a volunteer select...
No, all right, no, that's good. It, what they done down there made a huge difference, I think, of, uh...
Yeah, looks nice.
People gonna like it, you know, so.
Very good.
That's a lot.
Okay, uh, any other business?
I've got a few things for maintenance and...
Uh, Dan, what?
Yeah, I've got one of the thing, um, I got a complaint from an individual the last two nights on another individual riding their dirt bike at seven o'clock at night on their own land. And Carrie and I spoke about it this morning. We don't have a noise ordinance per se, we usually go off the dog ordinance, which is ten at night until seven in the morning. Um, the complainant was not happy with my response, so you may get a call on that, the select board. Um, from my aspect, we're not here to solve every single problem of every single taxpayer. And this is pretty clear cut, that person's riding their vehicles on their own property within what I consider a modicum of decency. Seven o'clock at night doesn't seem to be too late, um, so I just wanted to make you aware of it and if you had suggestions or wanted to put something in or do something different, then just let me know. But I think ten to seven is a fair, fair amount of time.
Can't take everybody's fun away.
I know.
I don't pay any taxes on the person's name that's riding his, his motorcycle. So it's gonna be hard for me to go up to him at seven o'clock at night and say, your bike's too loud, you can't ride. I'm not gonna do it, so.
Bill, I'm on board with you, Dan.
All right.
Good.
Okay, um, a couple things, um, the spigot that's underneath my windows in the front is leaking, so, um, Dan had been working with the, um, garden group and putting a timer on there, so, um, it was determined that being a new spigot thing, so Akin Plowing Meeting is coming next Wednesday to replace that. Um, the community building washing that you approved last meeting is happening on Friday, June twentieth. It's great, June.
That's good.
And, um, I did speak to, um, Spectrum, they emailed me and called me about, um, some internet packages that they're trying to sell and phone systems and all this, but I think I got it narrowed down to what I think we could do. Um, and I wanted to include the fire department because that was one of their issues is the speed and they can be a part of their, they can be a part of this and it would be the same cost as what we pay now. I think it's penny more a month. And, um, the speed would, we're at a hundred over ten and it would go to a hundred over twenty. It's not much difference, but we don't notice here in the office that it feels long or slow, so I think it'd be anything better than what Fairpoint is doing for whatever they have. If it's dialogue, I can't remember what they have. But, so, I just wanted to run it by you, um, I talked to Gary about it and I talked to the librarian about it and, um, you know, we're saying no for the fancy phone system, we're just changing it to this one hundred over twenty. It just gives a little bit of speed difference and the price is only a penny more. So, um, fire department didn't quite pay that, I think, every month, but I, I actually did look at their bill from my memory, I think they pay like ninety-seven dollars a month for phone and their internet, so we would take away that from Fairpoint, the internet part, and then put Spectrum in there, so it'll sugar off and might go over budget a little bit, but I think they need it with the new computer, so I wish Aaron was still here, but, um, I didn't think about it. But, so, um, those, um, were my maintenance issues. I just wanted to ask them, I guess, to move forward with that. I mean, it sounds like reasonable to just increase it and add them. I asked them about highway, if I know Spectrum doesn't go up that way, but I asked anyways and they're still checking, but I...
Well, broadband's gonna be up.
I know, I know. They tried and tell me a five-year contract for this other plan, but we're like, no, we're not doing any five-year thing. We don't know what's happening, let's just see how this progresses.
Yeah, the guy came for drug testing two Mondays ago. He's on the internet, he's like, this is horrible. So we shut everything off just so he could do what he didn't do.
On that spigot, it broke between when he turned the water on and the end of the faucet and it's all one piece inside the wall and he cemented it inside the wall. So it's not a big little thing, I could just unscrew it, screw it in one on. But I don't know what, I imagine what they'll do is go back inside, maybe bring another piece of metal out. And then hook the faucet on that way.
Yeah, that's why you hire plumbers to do it.
I don't know who put that in, but I don't believe a plumber could.
Probably not.
Maybe they did, I don't know.
Person's name is probably on a memory ball.
Sure was volunteered.
Uh, I got another thing, quickly, um, so the prints for the down road art has been designed by me. So we are, they're in the process of building that, so that's a little, uh.
I talked to Doug Morton today, he's gonna do the speed study in the next couple of weeks, he said, hopefully. So they'll be around doing that and get the results of that and they can move ahead, hopefully we'll get those signs to. Put them, you know, inside the speeds up to slow people down.
I have a complaint on pedestrian.
I don't wanna make that too, uh, I don't think it's on the follow-up actually. Uh, I, I attended a.
What do you think to?
A webinar from V-Trans about the whole downtown area here, the sidewalks and. Uh, the good news is there's grants available, um, the bad news is, uh, there's this around your grant, so it's, it's. I didn't print the right page, I don't remember the name of it, it's like the Bike Head something Town Program. The webinar was a lot about how to design like crosswalks and things that I didn't really care about. Um, the things, the takeaways were, um, if we wanted to study, if we wanted to even access this grant for say. Construction work, we would first need to do a scoping study. And the scoping study would be like, you define the area and say, here's what we have and we want, you know, what, what, the area we're looking to have improved, um. The bad news is, uh, the grant application deadline is July one and, but for this year. Um, the scoping study, it seems like NPDA might be able to do it, or so, and it seems like the minimum cost. V-Trans said the minimum cost of scoping study is, or an application for scoping study is sixty thousand dollars. The, if it's federally funded, which I'm pretty sure these are, it's twenty percent match from the town. And it sounded like most of these scoping studies fall within that sixty to like a hundred thousand dollar range. And that's just to get, once you have the scoping study, then you reapply for this grant for construction. And that's also an eighty-twenty match unless you do small projects, so if you pick like a small little stretch of sidewalk or something. Or bike trail, you could do, that would be a fifty percent match and that's the state funding. Um, the whole grant thing sounded like a nightmare, as usual, um. And, and it didn't seem like we would be prepared to do it by July, hopefully, budgetarily and even. I mean, the way, the way it's set up is we could put this into next year's budget and, and having grant would be awarded basically. Right before the next year starts. So we could make it work, I just don't know how we get an application and whatever they, they need to submit for a scoping study. I don't know, it, they might have told them, I don't know, that's also weird, I mean.
Yeah, that's pretty short.
Yeah, if it was like September, um, I think we could easily get it together. You know, I was thinking about asking you guys, was like, do I reach out to NPDA and see if they can whip up a scoping study? For, uh, an application by July, or do we be a little more thoughtful about this and give it like, I think it's another year.
Another year, do we get a quote, see what it actually costs?
The grant will be available again next year.
I think so, yeah.
Or do we, well, hire Nate to, what would we need to do to make it long-term?
And that's just the law, or?
Yeah, just the law.
Yeah, we could, we could look at it.
Just see where we're at, otherwise, I mean, we're not, you know.
Another thing somebody said to me too, was, um, you know, Aaron, you're talking about making one entrance into three oh two from powder spray. The person was saying there should be one entrance to the mountain hill, you know?
Well, as I started sitting here at the scoping study thing, I was like, they show a map and you're supposed to map what's where the sidewalks are, which ones in very good condition, bad condition. And intersections, and I was like, I, I started looking at our map and I was like, oh, you know, shit intersection, another bad intersection on the other side of town.
I'm sure Harold loves the problem.
I don't even love it, I don't know, man.
Yeah.
Uh, so, yeah, that means.
I don't, I don't know, I mean, it's a dog and it needs to be repaired at some point.
Yeah.
So I guess if we want another six months or a year to try.
It's not a good idea to rush it in some.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's.
It is also just the scoping part, so it's just them saying, well, here's what can or can't be done and here's how much it sugar could cost. And then you go to the next round with, so it really is like the basic study that like NPDA can do. I don't think a lot is too tight and I don't, I don't, I don't walk around the board.
We're not, I think, it's gonna take money, we need to kinda play.
Yeah, so, I mean, it could be twenty thousand.
Right, right, or if you don't have.
If they don't have. But is there a benefit for the town, for the future, the, to, yes, definitely. It's not that long, I'm gonna stay, I mean, there's big holes in it now, sand is coming through.
Yeah.
I think the patching of it's done, but what do you think, Carol?
Yeah, it's.
I mean, and, and there is a safety aspect, people are buying, you know?
Yeah, that's.
But I think, let's, uh, yeah, it's not like we could approve this tonight.
Oh, no, I, I do that.
Yeah, no, maybe move forward with this, you know, and, and.
So.
Should we come up with the money to do this study? We got something in front of us.
Yeah.
That, then we can, so it's easier to grant an expert. You wouldn't care if it's.
The grant.
Lot of experience, uh, no, so that's great, it's great work, like, um, I think for now, we'll just, we'll keep it on the plate, but we'll. We gotta stack down some rope.
So I believe we will be working with their, NPDA's transportation player as part of the town plan, so I'm just gonna bring it up as part of that and just see what.
Yeah.
So, and there is.
Did it all tie into the bike cap and all that?
Yeah.
Get more business in town?
Yeah.
Building the future for this town, you know, it's all.
Yeah.
Or we'll be one of those towns that went away, you know, that's not looking long. Anyways, good. We discussed the ball field.
I have one other thing, I hope they're still on maintenance or where, one of the public, um, the flags, the American flags or do you have a plan to get them up or?
We don't have any.
Hmm?
We don't have it, we have to buy them.
Okay, so are they on order or?
No, nothing's been done. But then, so, we talked about it last fall, the budget time and then nothing quite done, so. We need to know to place orders for flags and is that what you want me to do?
Yeah, I think we, yeah. We need them, yeah.
I have another question, is, is Noah planting the geraniums, the Scott Highway Memorial thing this year?
I think that was, um, Wade, um, Johnson senior that did that, um, he goes around it, I think Mike Carr did it originally and then Wade took it over. And I know he has flags there, I just know that there's no geraniums, so I, I saw that too, but I don't know.
I was at the meeting last year where they were asking if someone could take that, I noticed that it wasn't there.
Yeah, okay, so you want me to, um, order the flags, okay?
Yeah, the other ones would just.
Yeah, they were all dated and almost ripped and we disposed them correctly after the DSW or whatever, but, and then.
These are the ones for the poles.
Yeah, and then they just never got. But the whole, they, all the brackets need to be. Yeah, I mean, to replace the ends, do you try fixing some of them with those, um, clips and they may work, but.
Let's get what we need, then we'll hire.
Okay.
Someone to put them up or?
Ben, I think, has done it in the past, I don't know if we need two people to do those, I think, what.
Probably, especially if you're gonna be dealing with practice.
Yeah, right, so, I'll, I'll work on that, I'll do it tomorrow.
Okay.
We need to get the poles too, not the rest of the floors.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I, I just.
Okay, all right, no, I, I actually haven't thought about it again, I've thought about it once and.
Good, good one, Dorothy.
Um, the door, are they gonna, somebody gonna replace it or it doesn't?
That's part of the mark, we're waiting for the mark because that door, I think, qualifies to be replaced.
Oh, okay.
So, I think, we wait.
Is it unusable now?
It doesn't lock.
Oh, so should we, we need someone to look at it.
Yeah.
To figure out how to.
The, who knows?
Can we have Steve Ripmash or somebody to at least get it to lock?
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's, let's, let's make that happen.
I mean, if it's being replaced, just drive some bolts right through.
Well, emergency, I said, too. Probably. I mean, it's a fight, I can't. But there's gotta be a way to make it, to make it lock.
It's fixed right now, it's real hard.
Yeah, but, but it needs to lock.
Yeah, all right, I'm not gonna sign it line up anymore.
Yeah.
It's all, everything's rotted around it, so that obviously done, um, and I hope the mark will do.
All right.
Yeah.
It should.
I would think.
Yeah, it is an envelope issue.
Yes.
For sure.
It wasn't a good work of four either.
What?
It wasn't a good work of four either.
It's all rotted up.
I imagine they saw it in the box and.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Work on it.
Good. Okay, last one is the assessor, Justin. We have contacted. Helen, who's working for now, and we got that good report, so we're gonna move forward with bringing him on board as the assessor. Starting July twenty-second. Twenty-second. And that's, uh, so. Other than that, we're gonna move into executive session. For, uh, Carol on insurance needs. One didn't mention.
Sorry?
Yeah, all right, all favor.
Okay, so I'm leaving, so if you.